...is replacing. Talking about something with a line.
Ryan, are we all set to go? All right, today is April 24th. It is now time to call and to order the meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission. First thing I'm going to do is call the role. Commissioner Trisise.
Present.
Commissioner Shrewsbury.
Present.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner McCourtis.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Richards.
Here.
And I am the chair, Mark Blumer. I am present, obviously. We don't have Commissioner Snyder here yet. I don't know whether she's going to be here or not, but we sit on the floor and we can proceed. First of all, let me ask, we do have members of the public present at the meeting this evening. I'd like to ask if any of you would like to address the board on a general issue before we get into the specifics of the evening? No? Okay, so no public comment?
There was others.
Was there? I'm sorry.
Is there opportunity to speak before the public hearing?
Right.
Or is that only?
No, it would be after the public hearing. After the board considers the issues, then we would invite anyone who wants to address the board on that issue.
And I think I'd like to speak in advance at the public hearing.
Sure. Why don't you go on up to the podium there? Most of us know who you are, but for the record, could you tell us your name and address?
Hi, it's Lynn Page, 3912 Raleigh Drive in Oakhamas. And I just have some remarks to make regarding the SUP 23011 for Haslett Gallery. I had sent you some late correspondence. It'll probably be in your packet next time, but I just want to discuss the SUP application and from the perspective of a longtime township resident, I feel like if it were any other type of SUP, you would have a robust discussion of the health, safety, and welfare of the community in any other type of land use decision not relating to marijuana commerce. When I look at the application documents in the packet, it seems very mechanical. The applicant hasn't really met the requirements for the documenting the SUP standards. Those standards require the applicants to demonstrate that the project will not adversely affect or be hazardous to neighboring uses, and it won't be detrimental to the economic welfare of the surrounding properties or the community. And the evidence provided by the applicant is really subjective and outdated and not and presented as facts and does not contain verifiable data. I just want to point out that marijuana commerce in our township will negatively impact children. Marijuana commerce has significant public health and safety implications. Also, I have provided substantive data supporting that information. And I think as a planning commission, knowing that the township has received six applications for medical marijuana permits, I think you should have some instruction from the planning staff and administration about an overview in context of these applications and the compliance rules relating to the submission of the permit applications and the subsequent special use permits and/or building permits. When I look at the information provided to the planning commission and the public in the packet, the great majority is tenant lease application. And the staff report only has a few very short sentences about the content of the application, particularly in regard to the safety and odor control that's being proposed by the applicant. So I don't think there's enough information available to the public or the planning commission to have a robust discussion of what that might be. And I think ultimately, the planning commission should really discuss, what is the purpose of this application? The township approved medical marijuana licensing in 2019 and no, there are no, have been no active permits and no facilities have opened for medical marijuana. So it seems apparent that these facilities are really placeholders for recreational marijuana. And I think that should be made more transparent to the public and the implications of what that means in terms of the township's zoning and construction has to be discussed. Thank you for considering my input.
Thank you, Ms. Beach. All right. So there are no other members of the public who wish to speak? No. All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
There is no opposition. The agenda is approved. The record should also reflect that Commissioner Snyder has joined us. She was just two minutes late, so.
My apologies.
Not a problem at all. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was April 10. Moved by Commissioner Trisise. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioners. Curtis. All right. All in favor of approving those minutes? First of all, is there any discussion? Anybody have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Yes.
I noticed a very minor typo that I've shared with staff, but not content wise.
All right, good. So then, yes.
Well, right. On page six, in our discussion of the urban service boundary, for the fourth or fifth paragraph is questioning, not necessarily whether it's a hard boundary or under what conditions that boundary might be reconsidered. And I'm delighted to see that's in our discussion later on, so we don't need to belabor the point. But that was kind of my, the point I was trying to make there.
Very good. All right, thank you. So then, all in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
There is no opposition. Those minutes are approved. Communications? I understand there are no communications aside from the one that we received at the last minute. Very good, thank you. So we are now on item seven of the agenda, which is public hearings, the first one being 7A. Special use permit 23010, MSU to Lake Lansing pathway.
Thank you very much. As we all get used to the new arrangement. Let me go ahead and get there so everyone can see what we're talking about. This is the public hearing for special use number 23010. This is actually from Meridian Township's engineering department to construct Phase Two of the MSU to Lake Lansing Connector Trail. You saw the, you had the SUP for Phase One last year. And you guys expected to see this. This is for floodplain crossing. No wetlands are impacted by this. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So this is not a wetland permit. This is strictly for floodplain. One of the things, if you remember from the previous, the SUP for Phase One was that the required cut and fill for the wetland crossing there was part of this application, and that is fulfilled now. So that is fine. As far as SUP standards go, it's pretty straightforward. This is not human habitation. Floodwater is, from what we see from engineering, is not meaningfully obstructed. Now, township engineering has applied for the letter of floodplain amendment from FEMA. And they've applied to the Michigan Environmental Great Lakes Energy Department, Eagle, for the state permit for this floodplain crossing too. So any approval that you would have, they would give would have to be conditioned on the receipt of the state Eagle permit. Based on the calculations provided from engineering, there's no expected increase in flood level. And as I said, the required compensating cut is included and will be constructed at the time of the construction of the trail. So that's all I have. It's pretty straightforward, very much like Phase One.
The township is a township project. I'm just wondering why we have jurisdiction at all? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. Two questions. When I was reading over it, it says that there's 10, it's going to be 10 feet of concrete and then 14 feet of timber.
It depends on the location, the material, and there's, I don't know specifically where it is, but having talked to engineering staff, it might change depending on where it is that they're putting. They will tend to go toward the 10-foot pavement, though. The township is trying to move away from the timber construction.
Okay, because I was going to ask is that if timber is used, is it like the, kind of like the two-by-four look timber? Or is it wood chips?
No, no, no. You're talking about like on Oakhamas Road.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah, where necessary, that is the kind of construction that they're talking about.
The kind of this one, Oakhamas Road with the?
Yeah. That goes over the wetland there?
Got it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Richards, did you have a question? Commissioner Richard? You didn't have? I have kind of a legal technical question. Under whose authority is this being built?
Is the township's authority, but they require the state permit for the floodplain crossing.
Okay. All right. Basically, my question is, why is it coming before us? Do we actually have any control?
It is a special use permit because of the floodplain crossing.
Okay.
Not because of the trail per se. The floodplain crossing requires the.
That's what we're here for.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
When does, do you expect construction to begin and be completed? Is it going to be this year, you hope?
It is their hope to get it this year. Like I said, they can't officially proceed until they get the Eagle permit.
Sure.
But they would need to get the, it's a chicken and egg. They need to get the local in place before the Eagle.
Well, I'm looking forward to it, but.
Truth.
From us, so I don't know how railroad tracks are handled, but the, like the CN Railroad is right next to there. Is there any, I'm just, is there any safety concerns around like putting fencing along the rail?
No, it'll look like the interurban trail along the railroad in that section.
Okay. All right.
That is fenced, though.
Hmm, I run that quite frequently. I can get to the railroad if I want to.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I was just thinking like, I know there's multiple places where you can get to the railroad.
Now, you can have that discussion if you wanted to ask them about that, but it would be, there is no precedent for that.
Yeah. I mean, I was also thinking about there's that giant wetland on the western side of the railroad. And so there's like a lot of wildlife that goes back and forth. So I wasn't thinking that a fence was necessary, but I'm just curious.
Any other questions or discussion? Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment on this issue? Yes, yes, sir.
I'm Bruce Peppers, 4932 Sioux Way in Oakhamas. I actually monitor three vernal pools along this proposed pathway, one of which is only about 10-foot off the existing trail. And I assume that's where the proposed trail is going to go. I'm just concerned about during construction, maintaining a safe distance from those critical habitats and making sure that it's not impacted in any way. I'm not sure if this is where to bring that up, or I just wanted to make that concern.
Bruce, I didn't recognize you out of context. It's good to see you. If you can provide me the location of that, I'll get that to engineering and I'll bring that to their attention just to make sure they know.
Yep, there's, I only monitor three in that area. There are several possible ones that are located on the Vernal Pools partnership.
Okay.
GIS, so I can send you that link.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I also walk that path frequently and look at the vernal pools, so I second that concern.
All right, I think at this point, Brian, you need a straw vote from us?
Yes.
Okay. So the straw vote will be on whether or not to approve special use permit 23010. Commissioner Richards?
Support.
Commissioner Snyder?
Support.
Commissioner Brooks?
Support.
Commissioner Scales?
Support.
Commissioner McCourtis?
Support.
Commissioner McConnell?
Support.
Commissioner Shrewsbury?
Support.
Commissioner Trisise?
Support.
And the chair supports also. All right, we are now on agenda item number 7B, special use permit 23011, Haslett Holdings.
Okay.
This is the 50-page document. Contract. They didn't even like.
Okay, special use permit 23011. This is for Haslett Gallery. There was a typo and it was corrected. The corrected version does appear online. Special use permit for the application for the construction of a 4,000-square-foot medical marijuana provisioning center at 2119A Haslett Road. Before I get into specifics, I want to show you where that is. This is Haslett Road. This is Oakhamas Road. This is Strip Retail Center, and it's this one right here that we're talking about. So it's an already constructed building. So there's no anticipated site plan that'll follow this or anything like that. It is zoned C1 commercial. Our code of ordinances requires a successful marijuana applicant to apply for a special use permit within 60 days. And this applicant did fulfill that requirement for this application. This application is identical to one that you, this body approved in 2019. That was SUP 19131. Construction did start, but stopped after approved, and it expired before COVID-19 affected the community. The applicant is planning on finishing the remodel to the existing suite in the commercial strip. It is shown on our future land use map as commercial. As far as analysis goes, it is within our designated medical marijuana overlay District One. It has been approved of only, that's only one of seven areas in the township, and this use conforms with that township regulation. The dispensary does conform with our zoning and future land use designations from a land use perspective. It is a commercial use in a commercial district on a, you know, in an area shown on our future land use map as commercial. The material attached to the medical marijuana application, now remember, their SUP followed the successful marijuana, medical marijuana application. That has some detail that admittedly, we're not, it's not a, that is not a public application. There's proprietary data in that. But one of the things that they have to show is that they have adequate safety and odor control, and that is part of our SUP requirements. They have provided that. This is adequately served by sewer and water already, so no extension or expansion of our system. They did do a traffic assessment. The existing roads are capable of handling existing traffic. Again, it's a commercial to a commercial. No traffic studies required for this. They did submit a sign plan. The proposed signage meets the requirement of the township's sign ordinance. Based on this, from a land use perspective, staff has identified no major conditions or concerns that would negatively impact surrounding properties. I'm here to speak about land use and SUP requirements. If you have questions about the business itself, the applicant is represented. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any of the board members have any questions? Yes.
So when I read it, I saw that, and even just now when you showed it, this site, I know it's already constructed, but it will be between two businesses, the martial arts business and I know there's a quilt.
Yep.
Place which is behind it, but it's another business in front of that, I think.
Correct.
If, I mean, the business owner's not here, but I'm just wondering, will the production of marijuana there create like this smell and everything that can interfere with either one of those businesses on the side? You know what I mean? Like encroach upon?
I know exactly what you mean. And like I said, they did provide in their marijuana application their system for odor control. If it did turn into a nuisance, it would be a township nuisance, and we would, we would do something about it, up to and including, we can pull the permit. Yeah, yeah, that's all I'll say about that. I mean, they have, they are showing that. I think that part I could share with the planning commission if they wanted, if they wanted, but it'd have to parse it out of the entire medical marijuana application.
Brian, I believe the applicant would like to help out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Benjamin Jope, I also get it, 334 East Washington in Ann Arbor. Just because I have already heard some things about odor, one of the main things that I do want to point out about this site and this particular plan, and I heard you say production of marijuana, that's something that will not be happening at this site. There's no processing, there's no cultivation. And one of the things that we do have in our plan is, is what you will see at a lot of places is they do what they call deli-style, where they actually take it out and they weigh it. The marijuana gets agitated. We've found that that's one of the main causes of odor releases in a provisioning center where there's no production going on. So everything at this particular provisioning center will already be prepackaged and sealed before it gets to the provisioning center. So there'll be, there'll be no odor escaping in those particular way. We find that that cuts down on any odor exponentially, so.
Okay, thank you. Christina?
I'm all set.
That answered your question? Do any other board members have any questions?
Just to remind you, you will be asked to make a recommendation, and this SUP is one of those that will go to the board for final action.
If you have a question for staff, I mean, I guess just out of curiosity, the SUP number 19131 that was approved in 2019, I'm kind of curious about the date. Was that like January 2019 or many months before that?
I can't speak to the specific date, okay.
Anticipating this question, I just looked it up. The, all of the SUP applications for the marijuana licenses were in March and April in May of 2020. So this one was approved on March 3rd of 2020.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Richards?
This is just a process question, but I know in the past, we had a public hearing. We had kind of a staff overview. Then we heard from the applicant. Then we heard from any public. And then, as planning commissioners, we discussed any questions. So I guess I would prefer that process. So it's hard to, and some of the questions may get answered in the process of hearing from particularly the applicant. But I guess I would ask that our public hearings follow what we have been doing for a long time in terms of saving our questions so we have all the information in front of us and that we basically have questions and kind of draw from the folks that are here.
Well, I think it's helpful even to our ability to ask questions to get some of these answers, yes. Commissioner Scales?
I support that process also. I think it's more conducive to decision-making.
Okay. Well, if the staff has finished making its presentation.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to the applicant if they have anything outstanding.
Is there anything that you'd like to talk to the board about?
No, I, we do believe that the materials that.
No, I, we do believe that the materials that we presented to the staff and the board do speak for themselves and speak to the quality of the operation, but we are here, we're represented, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Scales?
I was really hoping he would walk us through his application.
Were there any specific pieces of the application that you'd like me to touch on?
I want you to educate me.
It's been a long process in Michigan since we passed Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, so there's a lot of ways that I could go with that. So I, I mean, to go with specifics is a little bit better. I mean, I can start from, you know, where cannabis in Michigan is growing at licensed processors and cultivators, it's then moved to these dispensaries through a secure transporter vehicle, which is another licensee that cannot have any, cannot have any interest in the processor, the cultivation, or the testing operations. Before it moves from a cultivator or a processor to be sold at one of these, at a dispensary, either adult use or medical, it must be tested first. It's got to pass these tests. So, you know, the biggest thing about allowing marijuana cannabis into your community is I think that we're all smart enough here to realize that cannabis is already in your community. Cannabis is already being sold in your community. The difference when you have these types of, these types of facilities is, one, you go through this process to make sure it fits in the community. You have to allow local law enforcement, including state law enforcement, access to your facility at all times. It's under cameras at all times. The inside and at least 20 foot surrounding all outside doors is under cameras. Anyplace where there's cannabis in these facilities is under camera. Really what I think that the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act and the recently passed, well, it's not even recent anymore, the MRTMA, what they really do is they give more safety for those consumers of cannabis is one of those things. One of that is through testing, and the other way is through the security that we provide now at these facilities. Now, look, I'm not saying that the gray market, black market, whatever you want to call it, cannabis people are bad, but in that market, you have untested products. People don't know what's in the products that they're buying. And the other thing is, our police officers don't know where these people are buying and selling it. So they're going to someone's house, someone's garage, someone's basement. Our officers don't know what's going on there. Here, what we have is we have a place that we have tested cannabis that meets all the requirements for the state of Michigan, and when you go to purchase it, it's all under video surveillance. We've got heavy, you know, we provide security at this place to make sure that not just the cannabis is secured, but the entire facility is secure, including the customers and anybody coming in there, right? So that's one of the biggest things that I believe the MMFLA and the MRTMA is brought this out and shed light on it. And when you have these licensed type of places, what you have again is the ability for your law enforcement, if you do believe that there's going to be problems, now, in my experience, we haven't seen much for problems, especially with many of the places that we've opened and the ones that are operated by this particular applicant. But if you were to have any problems, if you were to have any issues, you know, you've got your state police coming in, you've got local law enforcement coming in. We have biannual inspections by the CRA and the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, which is the State Department in Laura that runs this whole, this whole program. They can come in anytime they want. They do unannounced visits where they'll look around and make sure that you're not, you know, doing anything wrong, which would include diverting any product into the, into the black market. They're making sure your cameras are still working. They're making sure that you're tracking your, you're tracking your purchases, your sales, making sure that you don't have any untested cannabis that would make it to the consumers. So really, I mean, I guess to break it down into broad strokes is, again, what we've done is we've brought something where there was cannabis in Michigan, there's been cannabis in Michigan for a very long time with the 2008 Medical Marijuana, the MMMA. We brought that out. We didn't really have ways to test it. We didn't have testing requirements at that time. This is when we first had medical marijuana. We didn't have safe access for people to get it in, well, I don't want to say safe access, because what we had was we had a caregiver system where you had one person that could take care of, I believe it was up to six patients. They could grow 12 plants per patient. These people were growing then 72 plants all over, and they were having overages. So then they were selling it on Craigslist and they were selling it to other people, right, that weren't cards and whatnot. And then you had provisioning centers start to pop up, and those were unlicensed or licensed by a municipality, but still after a Supreme Court decision, they were illegal under Michigan law. So then in 2016, we had our legislator go ahead and try and fix some of these problems by allowing for these provisioning centers. Once we get, once we started to do that, you know, the statute said that we've got to have rules for testing, we've got to have security. At the time, I believe it was BMMR, which was Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation. So they came out with our administrative rule set, which was about 100 pages long of all the things that we had to comply with in order to be in this industry. That includes security measures, that includes inspections, that includes testing, and that happened in about 2016 or 17 is when we got that rule set. That's when we started to apply. That's when these things have started to go into a place. So now we started to see an industry that started to mature a little bit. We've gone through different iterations of what testing needs to take place, what the action limits are for certain things, mold, mildew, heavy metals, things of those nature. So the cannabis that you're seeing at these provisioning centers has been tested for all that, and it's been tracked. Now, we say seed to sale, but we know that the way the production process grows, it's not really a cracked seed. They're doing clones, but again, this is why I was saying I could go on and into it, and it could go every which direction. But really, the main takeaway here is what the MMFLA and later the MRTMA did was move a gray slash black market industry into the light, into the sunshine, and provided for the safety of the consumers and customers that wanted to get this product.
I got a question. Could you explain how you control access to the facility and who gets in and who is allowed to buy?
Absolutely. Every customer is ID'd before they are given access to the floor area, the space area where the cannabis is sold. So you've got to be 21 and over if you're adult use. Here, we're talking about medical marijuana. You've got to have a card and you've got to be 18 years or older. If you are a, if you are a minor, you basically have to come in with your parent and you also have to have your card also.
One of the issues that has come up in our recent discussions of the overlays in which these kinds of facilities are allowed is the question of volatility. Especially in our industrial zones where there's a concern that a high-paying client could come and set up in a zone, but given the volatility of the industry, pull up and leave, and a longer-standing industrial user might be disadvantaged in that way. It certainly seems like some of our bigger providers in the region are seeing some of that volatility and receivership and such. And I wonder if you could say something about where you see the industry in terms of its maturing and that kind of entry and leaving of the industry.
Yeah, you know, without using too many specifics or names of some of these organizations that we've seen go into receivership, I think what you've seen is you've seen, you know, somewhat of rush to get into this industry without as good of business planning. You've seen high-interest loans being taken out by some of these organizations because it is capital-intensive to build out these new types of things. You know, you're not, you're not just able to walk in and buy a factory that's set up for this. Well, now, I say that, but nowadays you're actually going to start seeing more of that, right? And this also goes to more of the production capability, the cultivation and the processing, more than it does go to the provisioning centers, which we're talking about here today. But I do think you've seen that, and, you know, I do have clients that are facing that. This is not one of those clients, but I'll use some of those things that we've seen out, actually in the public eye. You know, we saw one of these companies that's going to a receivership had signed on, you know, I want to say a $2 to $5 million loan with around a 25% interest rate. You know, so those are one of the reasons why you're seeing those things. I will tell you now, I hope my client doesn't get, this is not a leveraged cannabis organization here, so they don't run into those things of, you know, multi-digit interest rates like we saw with that organization. Would you like me to keep going kind of on where I see these things, or?
When is the dust going to settle?
I think we've got, I think we've got a bit to go there with the dust settling. I think you're definitely going to see some winners and losers here. I think you're going to see, you know, the people that had the business acumen to make it through, to make the correct decisions, that weren't relying on those high-interest rates, that made cautious planned expansions, that did their market analysis, that looked to some of these other states, you know, when, years ago, we were looking at $4,000 to $5,000 a pound for the legally-produced cannabis. Now we're down to like $600 to $800. So many people did business plans and said, well, I'm going to get, you know, I'll be smart and I'll say I'm only going to get $3,500 a pound for the next five years. Well, that didn't happen. And again, if you're looking at debt service and your projections had used $3,500 a pound, and now you're down, you know, to 18% of that, your metrics aren't going to work anymore. Your calculations basically are going to be off and you're going to go. So, I mean, I think as we see more of those things happen, I do think we're starting to see somewhat of price leveling, but we're still having additional production facilities come online. So, you know, it will take a little bit longer to sort itself out, but I think you're starting to see it more and more, and I think it's actually not going to be something that we see go on for, you know, five years. I think it's something that's going to be a dip and then the level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richards?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, can you help us understand the interaction between state approvals and local approvals? So do you get the state approval first, or you get this first and then you go to the state? Can you help us understand that?
Well, to be quite honest with you, it's different in each and every municipality, right? But the main reason and the main thing that you'll see in the MRTMA and the MMFLA is the locality has broad power over how and where they're going to approve these things, if they're going to let them in the community. You know, Meridian has already decided they're going to let these medical provisioning centers in the community. I know you guys had the vote on that. I believe it was in August or November where you had the vote to not let adult use in, but it wasn't a vote to have adult use in, I believe. I know they voted down to have a resolution that said we wouldn't have adult use here. Now, but to get to the heart of your question, so you get pre-qualified at the state. Some municipalities make you be pre-qualified before you apply for anything, whether that be a land use or whether that be your actual license. Now, some municipalities will give you a provisional license. If you don't have your pre-qualification, some will not, some won't even allow you to apply. So let's just say those things are done, so I'm applying here. Well, then I would be looking at your ordinance and I would look at the process that you would take. I would have pre-qualification at the state level. I absolutely need that. I would work with the municipality. If I need a land use in the municipality, obviously I have to get through that. Once I get that land use, usually I'm able to make an application to the locality, right? I make that application to the locality, and this is where it again goes back to ordinances of each municipalities. I make the application to you guys. You guys may approve that application, or you may give me a provisional license that says, hey, you're licensed here, you can't open up until you get your state license, and once you get your state license, then we'll give you your full license, right? But during that process through the MMFLA or the MRTMA, regardless of which category we're talking about, I then make an application to the state. For the medical one, you guys sign off and say, yes, they are in compliance, right? That would be after, again, I've been through the application with you. So then I take that application, I give it to the state, and the state would come back and give me my state license, but I would also have the license from you too. So basically, I'm locally permitted and I'm state permitted. But the timing of that is I basically need your approval before I go to the state. Now, the weird thing is, and I know we're not talking about adult use again here today, I can go through that process through adult use, and then at adult use, when the state is ready to hand me the license, then they reach out to the municipality and they say, hey, does this guy meet all the requirements? And they do that by phone, they do that by email, and you guys write back and you say, yes, they do, or no, they don't. If you guys say yes, then the state issues that license. The big difference is on the medical one, is I come in and I have a piece of paper that says, hey, I've got to take this to the state. Can your clerk sign this? And then you guys go through your records and say, okay, these guys were approved and they meet our conditions. Yes, I'll sign this. Whereas on the adult use side, they're basically just following in after I've made that application. Now, just for one caveat, even though I have that signed piece of paper from you guys for the medical one, they still do follow up with your clerk, with the staff here to make sure that that is still correct and in place.
So if I understand that right, the, here, you will get the approval at the local level and then go to the state?
That's, I mean, that's basically correct. A lot of times we're running the process in parallel.
My second question has to do with the actual operation. I, will, so you're representing people that will run the operation, or are you an owner in the operation?
No, I represent people that'll run the operation.
So my question has to do with whether all the transactions are going to occur within the facility, or if there's transactions of any kind that will happen outside the facility in the parking lot?
So all transactions have to be recorded and metric. I don't believe we made an application that asked for curbside service, and I do not recall off the top of my head if your ordinance even allows for curbside service. If your ordinance allows for curbside service, they'll look at that to see if that's a viable option for them. If your ordinance doesn't allow for curbside service, then absolutely not.
Okay. And the reason why I bring that up, because early on in the whole discussion here, I happened to visit a site in Lansing, and they had an armed guard in the parking lot. I don't think most people who consider wanting to have this kind of operation in Meridian Township actually want an armed guard in the parking lot. So I think that's something that we should know in terms of operation before we approve or recommend approval of a SUP.
Yeah, just briefly on that, on that topic, you may recall that specifically we're talking about medical here. Our medical ordinance was written before the state even started allowing curbside, so our ordinance does not allow curbside. So they will not be doing curbside under a medical marijuana license approval.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. This is strictly for medical purposes, not, so is there a difference between adult use? Is that like recreational then, or?
Yeah. So to be medical, you've got to be certified by a physician that you need it. You've got to have a state-issued medical card. You've got to be 18 years and up, and that's the parent and guardian thing that I've kind of gone through earlier. For adult use, you have to be 21 years old.
But your facility is strictly for medical marijuana?
Yes, there's no adult use ordinance in the Meridian Township right now that would allow us to have an adult use facility.
Thank you.
Just to clarify though, one of the things I heard you say though, that the process from a statewide is, what I heard was, if you get a medical, the process for getting an approval for adult use is a whole lot simpler.
I wouldn't say simpler. I think I was just trying to explain the difference between, there's an attestation for medical use that the municipality will sign, and that goes in with the application to the state, and then they will call and verify to make sure that's correct. Whereas with the adult use, I don't have you sign that attestation first, but then they're going to still call, email, and verify that it's correct, that I've been properly permitted here. Does that answer the question, or more than?
I guess at some point I'm going to want the staff, I would prefer to hear this, our staff talk about our ordinances and where, you know, how the two, and I think this is part of an education for us in terms of medical, adult use. What do we know? What don't we know? What's still up in the air? Because I think that this is the first application that's, or SUP that's come to us since the adult use has been approved, if I understand it right. So anyway, long story short, I'd like to, at some point, hear kind of how the two dovetail, what the possibilities are, and, you know, in terms of numbers of permits and that whole thing.
Yeah, so to be clear, this has absolutely nothing to do with adult use. If the township tomorrow decides they don't want to do any more movement on the adult use side, this would still move forward under the existing medical ordinance. How the two interact, we will not know until the board takes definitive action on the ordinance and then establishes the guidelines for how they are going to provide. So I, this application is looked at on its own under the medical, and then once we know more details of how adult use will come in, we will absolutely share that with the planning commission.
I guess one other thing I would ask, if we can, we probably don't know the answer to this question, but is there litigation pending somewhere in the state that
Yes.
ties the two together?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we should know that and what the possible outcomes of that litigation is in terms of impacting us and any other place that has approved the, we, as a township have approved the medical marijuana dispensation. We haven't technically yet, without an ordinance in place, approved adult use. I think we need to know, at least I would like to know, this pending litigation and what the potential is for the two sort of overlap or to be joined together or automatically things happen?
There's nothing that would automatically happen, to be clear. It's, there is a legal theory out there, but that's not something that we subscribe to, and we don't think any courts are either. The township attorney is working with the township board and informing them as to the legal ramifications of how do we move these two forward in tandem. And that's how we're establishing the ordinance.
Commissioner Scales?
It's been a while since I've had this issue under my viewpoints. What happened to our lottery, our assignment by lottery? And how does this S U P correspond to that?
So, consistent with the ordinance requirements for licensing, staff opened a window for the lottery on the second Tuesday of January of this year. We received four applicant, five applicants. They were the five applicants that were previously selected. So, a lottery was not required to be held this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions?
Public comments, yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this issue? Ms. Page? Ms. Page, I'll let you know, before you start speaking, I'll give you five minutes and that's it, okay?
Oh, we don't move that, mom. Just a couple of extra comments. Island Page, 3912 Raleigh Drive in Oakhamas. Just to address the application packet, I noticed that the traffic study included for the S U P was from 2019. Is that a current traffic study and is that acceptable for the S U P purposes? And also, just one comment regarding the applicant's representative's statement that the marijuana dispensed in this facility would be prepackaged, that's not a binding requirement on them. I have attended many of these public hearings where an applicant said that something was going to occur under a certain set of circumstances, and they can say whatever they want, but it's not required by law that it be prepackaged. And if they should decide not to abide by that and to package and disturb the product in the premises, they are allowed to do that. So, just to point that out, thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps staff could look into the possibility of adding something concerning the packaging of the product? We can decide whether or not we want to make that part of the recommendations to the board.
I'll talk to the applicant and see if I can nail that down. If you would like that to be a condition.
At least something that we can consider before we pass it on to the board. Commissioner Schuesberry?
As I understand it, the concern about packaging or having it prepackaged would be to mitigate or reduce any odor, but there's already a requirement that there not be odor, so I, which is enforceable because it's part of the ordinance. So, I just, I'm not necessarily, the rule of the board is that we have that requirement there, that's good. I'd be concerned to add that level of detail to a business operation for a legally permitted business in the township without a very good reason and making sure that it was precedent-setting, that if we did it for them, we would do it for anybody, any other business entity with this sort of thing. So, I think it's a slippery slope, I'd be a little concerned about going there.
No, I agree with you. It's just that the issue was raised and I thought it might be helpful to see a possibility.
Okay.
We can ultimately vote on it one way or another, whether we want it included in the final package.
What I'll do, with your permission, I guess, I'll, I'm going to bring a resolution to your next meeting. I'll attach that as an addendum. If you decide you want to add that, you can, and I'll put a final together for you to sign subsequently.
Thank you.
And I'll do that, I'll write that in conjunction, you know, after consultation with the applicant to make sure we're all on the same page.
And frankly, I agree with Commissioner Schuesberry that it would be, first of all, it's probably functionally redundant with the odor portion that's already part of the package. In addition, it might interfere with the proper business flow if, for instance, we're dealing with different package sizes, things like that. It could be unwieldy and almost unenforceable, but at least we can make an effort to see if there's something that will function.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner?
I just, I would have to agree with Commissioner Schuesberry on this issue, and also, I feel like if we just, if we're going to wait until our next meeting to discuss this, we're just kicking the can down the road, can we just have the discussion now about whether or not we even need an addendum? My personal feelings on this are just that it seems very undue and burdensome. I mean, if I go to get my hair cut at a salon that is next door to a Subway, it smells like Subway in the hair salon. Are we going to start asking Subway to package their subs in airtight containers? It just seems very excessive. So, I'm thinking it would be great to be able to just kind of have this discussion now so that we don't have to do it again in two weeks.
I have like a governance question. So, are we allowed as a planning commission to set stipulations like that into an S U P?
Absolutely. Special use permit by its nature are uses that potentially have a negative externality or a concern with respect to the location. And so, as long as your, as long as your condition, I believe, has a rational nexus to the, to the application at hand and the concern that you are trying to address, so you can't just tell them that they can only serve to people driving a BMW, because that doesn't advance any legitimate public purpose. There has to be a nexus between the condition and what you're trying to solve. But yes, especially with an S U P, we can recommend in this case, or in other cases, impose directly conditions upon an application to address concerns.
Yeah, question about, a couple of questions here. Do the applicants have ability to transfer a license? I know we've talked about some volatility. And so, what controls the, you know, ability for the person, the organization, the owners, whatever, to transfer a license?
Yeah, so that is separate from the S U P, but to your point, the ordinance does not have a transfer provision at this time.
So, it's only good for the applicant?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I guess, I have a question about the whole, there was a comment made that the applicant submitted documentation on their ventilation system, for lack of a better word, in terms of controlling odor. And this is the first, my guess, this is the first time we've actually seen one of these from a staff standpoint. Do we, are we going to have our, somebody that represents the township look at the data, kind of similar to a traffic study, and say, okay, yeah, it's the airflow with the change? And again, I think there's a difference between, at least in my view, between a standalone building and a building that has one roof but multiple tenants, and you've got space above, you know, most of these are constructed with, you know, pretty, you know, with, you know, some space in there, maybe there's a firewall or not, but is it odor permeable, that sort of thing? So, I think there, this being the first time, I guess I'd recommend that the township at least have a third-party expert look at the airflow, just to see that it is what they say it is.
Yeah, so our mechanical inspector will review this if it does get to the building permit.
I just have one more comment. So, my understanding though is, so this, this is, this permit, they have approval for it, they meet our ordinance requirements, and are submitting this application, the staff are saying that this, that everything looks good.
This is the same permit that was approved in 2020.
Right, so, okay.
Can I just make a general comment? I really, just based on the limited discussions that have occurred during my time on the commission, I really feel very strongly that people who have a strong opposition to dispensaries, I would really encourage you to go to a dispensary, walk inside of one, see what it is like. It doesn't even really smell like marijuana inside of the dispensary. It's a dispensary and the merchandise comes prepackaged and it's behind glass cases. They're very well done. I've been in several because my curiosity drove me to do it. Prior to that, I kind of was like, eh, don't really care either way what becomes of this recreational stuff. But I just wanted to understand better. If you have not been inside of one, you absolutely owe yourself that. Go in one. The people I have met inside of these places of business have been incredibly professional. They are following the laws. Just go to one and look around. I really urge you to do that. I think it would calm so much anxiety for a lot of people. Thank you.
I'd like to note, I was going to say the same thing, but you got there first. I've been in a couple of these, you cannot smell them when you pull into the parking lot and park next to the building. And like you said, when you walk in, the security, you may as well, I've been, I've been in Jackson Prison, not as an inmate, but I've gotten in, and the security is similar. I mean, you have to go through a locked door after you show your I D. When you get inside, there is no smell. I don't know where it's going, but there is no smell even when you're inside the dispensary. So, it's really an issue that is, gee, I think, being blown out of proportion, like you say. And my exposure to these places is that they are very professionally run, much more professionally run than many other institutions that could have been there instead. So, just an observation. Any other comments or questions?
I'm not confessing to being in prison, but I think what we're doing here is making sure that if we do have this type of business within our community, that it is definitely run as professionally as you all are speaking of them running. And I think that causes for due care and consideration over the applications. And Director Schmidt sent us some information today, and I definitely want to have time to go through each and every one of the documents that I was unable to go through due to the hour of the receipt of the information. So, I do not want to make any snap decisions. I want to make a careful decision because the decision that we make on this S U P will be setting the future decisions, the framework for the future decisions of other S U Ps that will eventually come before us. So, I think we should get it right the first time.
Could I ask the applicant if you know how many other facilities, dispensaries, does this company have? Excuse me.
I believe at this time, they're running, excuse me, at least four additional.
Have they had any licensing or compliance problems?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Can you give us the locations of those? So, maybe we, if anyone here is interested, we can go and look at one of their facilities to see how they operate.
Absolutely, and one of them is located in Lansing, 2001, the name of it is Herbana.
Pardon?
I believe it's 2001 West Saginaw. And the name of it is Herbana, H E R B A N A.
And if anybody has access to Google Maps, I, you know, if you want to make sure that
I just gave the correct address, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the panel?
I'm sorry to make you get up again, but could you, would you mind maybe talking a little bit, just brief, just briefly, about how, what are some of the medicinal uses for medical marijuana that the industry or that have been shown to be beneficial to people? Could you talk on it for a moment?
I could, but I will tell you right now, you are talking to the wrong guy.
Okay.
I'm looking more at the compliance and things of that nature, and probably even your experience at going to some of these places, there are people that are very, very, very well educated on this thing, that have really made it a life's work, a passion for themselves. If you do look at the MMFLA, or yes, the MMFLA, you'll see a list of qualifying commission conditions. This is also in the MMMA. I mean, this is cancer, epilepsy, PTSD, rheumatoid arthritis. I, God, I'm trying to think of Crohn's disease. I mean, it's, if you go through it, you'll see it's literally a laundry list of things. Now, fortunately enough, I haven't had those issues, so I can't tell you how it deals with those issues. I do know that I've used certain products when I screwed up my knee, and when I've screwed up other muscles, I've used topical rubs, I've used some other things, and those have seemed to help me through that, or maybe it was time that heals. But either way, it gave me the confidence that it was helping, and I did feel like it was helping. But the uses for cannabis and cannabis products has been proven to be useful for many different conditions. And I think with the limited study that we've had of this product because of the prohibition for the last 85 years, since that time, we're a little bit behind in the research, but you are starting to see it catch up, and you are starting to see it be used for multiple conditions. And I think we've all seen the testimonies as we work through this process as a state of many people that have found a use for it to help either their child, to their grandmother, you know? So, we've seen it really run the whole spectrum when it comes to helping people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to have a rough vote from the committee, a straw vote?
Straw vote is entirely at the discretion of the chair and the planning commission. It's not something that staff needs, but it certainly provides us with direction if you decide.
It may be helpful to let you know where our thinking is. Yeah, I think as the chair, I'm going to call for a straw vote. So, the vote would be in favor of approval of this S U P. What was the number on that, 2111?
23011.
011, all right. So, yeah, let's do it this way. Commissioner Richards?
I'm not in favor at this point, based on additional information that's been provided. I'd like more information about particularly the tie between the medical marijuana and the recreational and lawsuits, so I'm not prepared, I should say at this point, I'm not prepared to vote.
All right. Commissioner Snyder?
Based on prior approval, support.
Commissioner Brooks?
Support.
Commissioner Schles?
I guess I wasn't heard when I spoke earlier. I have documentation that was given to me today that I want to review before I make a position, and I want to make sure that when I cast my vote, that my vote is doing the right thing the first time. So, no, I am not prepared to even vote or take a straw poll today.
Okay. Commissioner McCourty?
Abstain.
Commissioner McConnell?
I'm in support of the application.
Commissioner Schuesberry?
Support.
Commissioner Chisai?
Support.
And the chair supports on the straw vote. So, we are now on item eight, unfinished business. I'm sorry, did I cut anybody off who wanted to address that issue? No, okay, I'm sorry.
That issue, no.
All right, so we are now on item eight, unfinished business, special use permit 23004, veterinary clinic.
This is the follow-up to the public hearing that you held on April 10th for a special use permit, 23004 Schultz Veterinary Clinic, for a expansion of the existing business at their property on, you know, on Bennett Road. The only thing that you had us look, you had us look into the pathway a little bit, so I talked to the township engineering staff about that. I want to make clear, they have fulfilled their obligation, they have paid They have paid in lieu of construction. They're, they have met the requirement for that, for the, for the pathway. The pathway itself will meet the township's construction standards, meaning it's not going to exceed a three to one grade. It therefore, by township standard, does not require any rail to be constructed. It is known, they do fully understand that you will see the wetland permit application. That will be another public hearing for the, for that pathway because it is going to go into a wetland. They are planning for the required wetland mitigation. You'll see all of that at the appropriate time. But as far as the application goes, I have no further comment on the expansion of the business. As far as we're concerned, they've met the standards of our ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for that and move to adopt the resolution approving special use permit number 23004 to construct 650 square foot addition on the existing business at 2770 Bennett Road.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion before we take a vote? Commissioner Brooks? Alright, we're gonna hold off on the vote till Commissioner Brooks returns.
Oh, oh, okay. Think you just sing us a song and we'll dance. Once upon a midnight dream.
I'm thinking, oh, Anna Simpson's.
He's, he's just walked in.
Oh, good, okay. Commissioner Brooks? We are about to hold a, a vote.
Sorry about that.
We're about to hold a, a vote on whether or not to approve the resolution approving the expansion of the veterinary clinic.
Okay.
Alright. So, let me take this out of order because some people always have to go first. So the chair's gonna vote in support of the resolution. Commissioner Trisaius?
Yes.
Commissioner Shrewsbury?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Support.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Alright, the resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you for.
Come back again soon.
One question, does marijuana have any veterinary application?
A lot of people using liquids for their dogs or seizures, for dogs for other medical reasons.
So there, there are. There are veterinary applications. Very good, thank you very much. Alright, other business, none. Master plan update.
So, staff handed out a draft of our goals and objectives on where we stand right now, based on our feedback and discussions we've had with residents and the planning commission. You've had a couple of weeks to look them over, the goals and objectives and our implementation, implementation matrix. I am just here to, here to see if you have any feedback, anything you want to change, add, delete, et cetera. We are getting very close to having a draft to present to you. We're not there yet, but we're very close.
Yeah, I found an awful lot to like in this set of, of goals and objectives and, and even some of the implementation steps. Engaging with neighborhoods, engaging with the corridor improvement authority, looking at the M78 corridor, linking with the MSU land use plan, updating the green space plan, using the land preservation fund, considering using the land preservation fund for purchase and development rights, woodland ordinance. All that stuff is, is right, the kind of stuff I'd, I'd like to see. There was one comment about coordinating with CADA about the location of stops. And I hope that that can be broadened to, working with CADA to consider where the fixed routes run in our community and whether they are serving our residents as best as possible.
Was that, let's see. Can you, can you point me?
I'll see if I can.
Well, here, I'll just, I'll just write the note, yeah. You, you want CADA to evaluate their, all of their routes, not just the fix?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. It was the third vote under public services.
Oh, okay. I was, I was looking for, yeah, I got it. Okay.
I'd like to comment that I like the provision in there that treating the Lake Lansing region as a special, special unit. I think it deserves that special categorization, and I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
I thought there were a couple of comments in there, or bullets in there about looking at minimum house size and encouraging affordability of housing and als, and also the middle cost, middle cost housing. Which I think are, are very good goals for this township as we grow.
Thank you.
I also appreciated several references to improving bicycle and foot traffic in neighborhood walking that I think are very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richards?
Yeah, the city under goal preserve and strengthen residential neighborhoods were mixed-use developments. To me, they've all been apartment, basically. So I'm not sure that mixed use has actually strengthened residential neighborhoods, at least in my opinion. Basically have added to our rental units, which, you know, have their own, you know, we've got a lot of them, that's for sure. But I'd like to see more of all single-family residential as opposed to new mixed-use developments. At least in terms of preserving and strengthening residential neighborhoods. I mean, that may be in economic development or some other thing, but. And then the other thing I, I, without looking at this, there was some, there was a, a line item here or two about urban service boundary and it more or less, if you read, at least when I read between the lines, it's like, it's, it's a moving target kind of thing. And it hasn't necessarily been that way. I mean, we've talked about tweaking it a little bit to make it, but at least somewhere in here, I saw a statement that more or less implied like it was gonna move over time. And I don't think that's, that was not the original intent of having the urban service boundary. I can, I'll look.
I think we had some language about trying to come up with a process. We've run in, what we've run into is some developers that have come in and we've said, oh, you're not in the urban service boundary. And they've said, well, what do we gotta do to ask for that? But that's not advocating to change it.
No, but as soon as you set up a process, you're, you're, you are, I mean, you can set up a process, says here's a one-on thing, you know, somebody needs utility and it's right across the street, but when you, when you imply that there's a process, you're implying that you want, you know, people are going to, you're giving encouragement that it's gonna move. And I guess that we should think about that in the context of the urban service boundary in terms of, do we really want to be putting up a process for something that we, we may or may not want to see move? Unless, unless, unless the process is really limited to, you know, one piece of property or, you know, something that is kind of something that begs for a solution.
Okay.
Opposed to a big subdivision.
Oh, sure, sure. We'll look at that. No problem.
There is a process for changing the urban service boundary, and that's to get someone to introduce an ordinance change at the township board, and they can change the urban service boundary that way.
But it's not.
But it's not an organized, well, the urban service is not an ordinance?
It's a master plan function.
Okay. I misunderstood.
I'd like to respond to something that Commissioner Richards said about the multi-use, multipurpose. From my, from the perspective that I've seen so far in my involvement in township government, the problem seems to be that it's at the will of the developers. The township has a multi-use program, and they inst, they give a permit to the developer who about a year later says, it turned out to be too expensive, I'm not gonna do that. And then the township says, well, okay, what can you do? And by the time they're done, it's nothing but an apartment complex. If the township would enforce the original concept, and I don't know how you put that into a master plan, but it seems to me that the concept itself is viable. And I've been in communities where multi-use has been fully developed, and it, it works. The problem seems to be like with the downtown development authority, it was originally an MUPUD. And over the space of three or four years, or three years during the pandemic, the builders just fell apart. And the project ended up being nothing more than a parking lot with an apartment complex attached to it. And I think the problem is a lack of enforcement of the original concept once it's been approved. I'm not sure how that fits into a master plan, but that seems to be what's happening in some ways.
Okay.
Yes.
So I really appreciated a couple of things here. The, the mention, we had discussed this a while ago, but the accessory dwelling units, evaluating the potential for inclusion of accessory dwelling units. I really appreciated that. But also, I was happy to see under the maintaining outstanding public services, the working to ensure that planning and land use decisions consider equity and inclusion. Then when I reread the statement, I kind of wondered if maybe that bullet should be moved, maybe migrate on over to the preserving and strengthening residential neighborhoods? Because I, I would, it seems to me like considerations for diversity, equity, inclusion, all of that could, should be in that category because those things do strengthen neighborhoods.
Okay.
However, at the same time, I think that if that were to be moved to that other category, perhaps replacing under maintaining outstanding public services, replacing that with something to address DEI in our public services, making sure that there is accessibility for people of all abilities.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
So do you, so maybe a duplication? So you want language in both places, essentially?
I think that that would be reasonable.
Okay.
But I did, I did appreciate that, being, being in the master plan draft here.
Okay.
I hadn't thought about it that way until you just raised it. But I wonder if there might be certain sort of principles or goals that kind of elevate as an opening statement, like the support for diversity, equity, inclusion across everything. And I don't know if you then reiterate it within the, and I'm not sure how, if this is sort of what you're going to use to kind of push forward, and it's not necessarily going to be, if, if this is a vision and it's not going to be a printed document, then maybe it doesn't matter as much. But if it is going to be sort of used as a basis for something that ends up being printed in that format, then maybe there are some guiding principles that sort of are over and above all of these areas of.
Are you talking about a mission statement?
Perhaps, yeah. You know, just a sort of a value statement of all of, all of these goals through public service, through housing, through this, that, you want to look at through a lens of equity across a number of variables. You know, equity and ability, equity in income levels, equity in, you know, a wide range of diverse populations in the, in the community. And if that complicates it too much, it was just an idea that came to me as I was listening to Commissioner Phillips talk. So I haven't fully looked at what it would look like in this document.
Well, we'll look at the formatting. I'll talk to Director Schmidt about it. And maybe we'll come up, we'll stick and stab at something and see how you like it. I understand what you're getting, I understand where you're going with that, though, and.
Whether we put it five times in five different sections, it might be easier to elevate it up to the top.
If we've got redundancies, pull them out and say, okay, yep, I get that.
Otherwise, I really like where you're going with, I mean, this is, this is helpful.
Can I get a second bite at the apple? I'd like to double down on, on Commissioner Shrewsbury's suggestion there. One thing that I've, I've mentioned in passing in the past, I think it's worth considering, is an inclusion of a land acknowledgement in our main land use planning document that reminds us of who was here before the Meridian Township government was, and how we came to be in this place, and how that influences how we plan for its future. I've had informal discussions with folks next door. It's an OCHMIS center, and it's something, a practice that they're aware of. It's something that many units at MSU use, sometimes in a provisional sense. So it's, it can theoretically be a thorny issue, as it were, but I, I think it's worth considering.
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
And it wouldn't fit in any of the sections. It would.
Standalone section, yeah. Okay, I'll look into that. That's a, I, I get that. It's a good point.
There is a history, township history in this someplace, isn't there?
Yes, there is. It's in a box right now.
Yeah.
We did find that.
But I mean, I don't mean that. I mean, in the document, in the land use, isn't there something, a description of the township? And may not be historical, but something like that could be incorporated into a description of, this is Meridian Township, this is where we come from, whatever, and
Sure.
go forward with the bullet points separately.
Sure.
It would be sort of an introduction to the whole concept, the whole document.
Okay.
I've got two or three books that have that information also. And I dug back into my files, trying to understand how did we get here with this urban services boundary? Yeah, I found a memorandum from 2013, back when we called it the Urban Services District. And we tried to implement this. And my file that I found, it's gonna take me just a little while to go through this. But it's a lot of history that's packed in here, and some of the decisions that were made in the past and that resulted to where we are today. And I just, I'm just trying to take some time to go through that, review it.
I have a couple of comments. One is, I'm gonna say this on the record just because I love the show so much. So, last week tonight with John Oliver, did a show on homeowners associations. And it was fantastic. Also, he does some crazy stuff where he partners with local governments frequently, which maybe will happen one day. But I, but that being said aside, it made me think about the homeowners associations and Meridian Township, and specifically how they're deployed as sort of a planning tool to build out neighborhoods. And whether or not they create disadvantages or advantages for residents. And so, one thing I was thinking about is if we could, I don't know what the question is here, but what, what ordinances do we have on HOAs? And then how do they fit into our, our housing development plan?
We have language in here about trying to strengthen communication between us and neighborhoods.
Yep.
HOA, HOA regulations are outside of our jurisdiction.
Right, yeah.
So what we end up telling people is the more stringent regulation counts. So what we end up telling people is, the more stringent regulation counts. So if we have a 20-foot setback, and they say, no, you have a 30-foot setback, their 30-foot is more stringent than ours, they have the right to enforce that, you see. The HOA is set up at the discretion of the developer. We don't have a mechanism to say, thou shalt create an HOA.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if I'm answering your question, if I'm, I'm getting, or if there's somewhere else, somewhere you want to go with this. I'm happy to-
So one of the negative aspects of HOAs was that they were causing, they would cause issues for residents, where residents are losing their homes, or they're getting assessed fees by HOAs.
Mm-hmm.
And they were completely outside of the purview of local government, basically, because the HOA becomes this sort of higher-level authority, almost. And so what the, this concerned me about was whether or not there were HOAs in Meridian Township where we accept their development and a new piece of land, but then what happens is, is there's a negative ramification on the public in those spaces. And I don't know the answer to those questions. I was just thinking about them in terms of our strategic planning, and how we deploy or work with developers in terms of allowing them to, to create these kinds of neighborhoods, where basically we're, we are giving up our authority from a governing perspective.
Okay. Evaluate new potential HOAs to ensure compatibility with the ordinances.
Yes.
That's what I'm, okay.
Yes, exactly. So from a planning commission pers, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to take everyone's comments to heart that says, like, what can we do as a planning commission? And this seems like one where we can mandate specific language in any sort of commission documents or whatever that would lead to these kinds of practices not happening in our community.
Okay.
Like setting limits of some kind, or?
Yeah, I don't know what it would look like.
Well, he came up with examples, I saw the same show, he came up with examples where the homeowners association actually forced the resident out of the house.
Yeah.
First, they give it up, and they ended up, the homeowners association ended up buying the house for $5.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that that's happening here in Meridian Township. I'm just saying that, like, there are, you know, a developer comes in and they want to build-
Sure.
-25 houses, and we're like, oh, that sounds great. But then there's this other thing that's attached to it that we-
And, and not all developments are HOAs.
Right, correct.
But your point holds. The opposite is, is more my experience, and H, we, we get calls for, or an HOA went defunct because they didn't collect enough and they stopped operating.
Right.
And then they have private roads, and their private roads-
Yep.
-stop operating efficiently, and then they call the township and say, that hasn't happened to me here, but that has happened a lot over my career. And they say, what can you do for us? And we say, not a thing. Sorry about your luck.
Yeah. But ultimately, then we, at some level, like the township residents, who want to buy a house in our community, will pay the price of that, that decision, though.
Yeah. Our, I think our, I think our HOAs generally are stronger than that. I don't think that's-
Sure.
-that's going to be our, our issue. And I, I like, I like the suggestion that we kind of look at those HOA documents when they come in. I think that's a good idea.
I just have one other comment, but unless you're-
Mine's related to the HOA. I just want to make the distinction that I think exists between an HOA, which is sort of a loose organization, and we do have a number of condo developments, including the one where I live, where it is a condo association that's governed by state condo-
Yes.
-incorporation, so different and-
Correct.
Quite often confused. I hear our condo board referred to as an HOA quite often by people who do. And unfortunately, realtors sell people condos and condo developments without really educating them about the difference between condo living, because they're stand, you know, in our, it, it can be very confusing, and so I just don't want to perpetuate that confusion, because there is quite a distinction.
But that's controlled by, by state law.
Right, right.
The problem with HOAs is that they're virtually independent.
Yeah.
And they can and do sometimes become quite abusive.
Yeah.
Well, condo boards can do that, too.
But there's a state law mechanism on top of that.
You know, if you want to paint the shutters on your house green, the HOA likely is going to come in and say, no, you can't. That's a violation of our color standard. You know, they just, they, they really adhere to the power that they develop.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen it, yes.
On the HOA theme, well, we don't, as far as I know, have any mechanism for requiring the creation of an association when a subdivision is built. Effectively, we'd create that need with our requirements for avoiding development in sensitive areas, especially weapons, water bodies, and others, and open space requirements when we do planned unit developments. So we're creating public, but not township, land-
Right.
-that needs to be governed by something. So that's one of the mechanisms by which they kind of come into being, and the ones that are stickiest are the ones where there's landholding. Some subdivisions in the township have dissolved their HOAs. They didn't have any property, and they decided they didn't need to, so they dissolved them.
Not to Shanghai your conversation, that has happened in this township. We have, we had, we had a piece of property that I've had, like, half a dozen phone calls on. It showed up on Zillow as a for-sale piece of property at a good price, and, and it turns out to be protected land with no development rights on it. That has happened.
Okay, unless there's no other HOA comments, which I'm glad that we talked about.
Sorry, I don't mean to-
No, it's all right. My second recommendation slash idea about the, the goals and objectives is related to walkability.
Mm-hmm.
So this year, I've been making an effort to walk as many places as I can, and in terms of how we plan new businesses, I don't, or just, so here's what my vision is, so, or what my struggle is. So when you're walking around in Meridian Township, there's not always a sidewalk that goes from the main access road up to the actual business. It's almost always you have to walk through a drive, you have to walk-
Okay.
-some sort of driveway, and it, like, it's a, it's just an, it's an accessibility issue, but it's also just a walkability issue. And I, for one, would be really interested in thinking about, how do we develop a planning requirement for sidewalk accessibility or something like that in our strategic planning?
Within a site, like the mall, for instance.
Yep, so like, if, if they're going to develop it, then it has to have some sort of sidewalk access to the main, main streets. I mean, it's like that in Meyer, like, you can't walk, you can't really walk up to Meyer from Grand River. You have to, like, go through a bunch of parking lots.
Okay. It's a good point.
Get a handicap sticker and park closer.
I don't know.
Any other comments?
In, in, just in addition to, to what Commissioner Brooks said, I think, I mean, I brought that up, this up, I don't know, meetings, few meetings back, but even with the subdivisions, too, that's, that's, walkability is an issue.
Mm-hmm.
I don't need to repeat that, because we talked about it before, but-
Yep.
I mean, that's a good point with businesses, and with residences, too. Because it, it can become, like you said, accessibility issue, it's a safety issue.
Sure.
Now, feel free to piggyback, piggyback on my comments. Anytime.
Are there any other comments or issues about the master plan portion of the agenda? No?
Oh, I do have one question.
Oh, true.
So there's a lot on here.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of goals and objectives. Is there going to be some sort of pruning process?
Pruning process?
Yeah, like trimming, trimming down the goals and objectives, or are we just like-
This is your draft list. If there's stuff on here that the planning commission does not want on here, now is the time to tell us. Or rather, between now and approval, you're on the clock, I guess is a better way to say it.
Okay, all right.
And if you, is there something specific that you're worried about?
No, no, no. I, I guess I feel like what we've been doing is just adding and adding and adding, and there hasn't been this sort of conversation about, like, does it make sense that we have all 50 of these, or whatever they are, as, as priorities?
A lot of these are reorganized and reworded from what's existing. Some of these are new and based on conversations. I think that's why we follow up with, with the implementation matrix. That's new to this discussion. We don't have that in the existing master plan. To kind of guide, well, what does all this really want us to do? We're really interested in your agreement with that, if there's other tasks that you want to accomplish in the next five years. But this is, this is your list.
Okay.
This is your draft list.
Commissioner Skels?
I see this process just starting to merge, throwing these things up on the wall, and eventually you'll look and see that this and this are saying the same thing, and that and that, and you, you continue to bring them together, and you, less is more. You get it to a point where you can actually get something accomplished-
Yeah.
-and you make everybody happy, so to speak.
And to that point, you will see this again. Like I, like I said at the beginning of this conversation, we're really close to having a draft to present to you.
This is a process.
At least the text-wise, a draft, yes. And that's just part of the process. Commissioner Skels is right, you'll get more chance at this.
Commissioner Curtis, do you have any issues?
No.
Yeah, I was piggybacking on Commissioner Brooks. The implementation matrix, which will include the hyper-specific items along the timeframe, look at them. Additionally, this matrix will act as a sort of roadmap for the planning commission's work over the next five years. To me, that's where the rubber hits the road, is when we say, okay, these are the things we want to spend our time on. We got to, we can't do everything, we can't focus on everything, so we'll have to do some of that. Having said that, I, I like the pieces that are given there for the implementation matrix. When I think matrix, I think they're going to maybe map back onto these goals, and I guess that's the direction we're going. It'll be easier to digest when we have a goal and we have an implementation action item that, that matches it, then we can prioritize. And staff is going to have to prioritize, and the commission's going to have to prioritize which of those things we want to work on first. But a lot of stuff that we've been doing on the commission since I've been here was stuff that was in the prior master plan, simplifying code ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, sign ordinance and things, so it is kind of the broad roadmap, and then we get into prioritizing at some point.
Good conversation.
Item number 11 on the agenda, report. Township board update?
I just have one more thing, and just, I'm looking at the 2005 master plan, and I see a lot of the same things in here.
He said many of them are, are statements of the original, of the last plan.
Township board update, just really quick, I have a couple notes. The sign ordinance is expected to be approved tomorrow, so congratulations. The Cade Street rezoning is coming back in two weeks for final adoption. That's what I have on the board.
Thank you.
I'm going to sit down now.
All right, how about liaison reports? Did you attend any meetings?
Yeah, I did. Last week, I attended the zoning board appeals. There was one application involving a sign on one of the I buildings for Sparrow Clinic. We approved that. And then I attended the Brownfield meeting the week before, and one of the issues was a tentative contract to be presented to the Haslett Village with regard to their hazardous waste removal that has to be agreed to prior to applying to the state for their funding for Brownfield redevelopment, so that was on the agenda there.
One thing on the zoning board of appeals, I think they're, they're in dire need of alternates for that board. You might want to comment on that.
We have five members, which I believe is what's approved. Two of us, the treasurer and myself, are not eligible to hold office on that by state law, so we have three people fighting for two positions, and we have had difficulty getting quorums at time. So, and I'm not sure what provision the township has for alternatives to serve on that, but if there are people interested, that would like to apply, they, they can do that through the township application.
Yeah, there's an application form through the township-
Right.
-they can submit that, and if anybody's watching on TV that has an interest, that they should look into that.
Yes.
And if any of us know anybody that might have an interest, because it's very difficult when you're not getting a quorum on an important board like that.
Any other liaisons? Very good, all right. Project updates, project report?
We had no changes at the time of the printing. I will say that the project report will be provided next, at, at our next meeting. We had two site plans come in today.
And the board of directors is going to be taking up, the board, board of directors, the township board is going to be taking up an issue tomorrow on boards and commissions needing Robert's Rules of Order training. Apparently, there have been some comments that have been sent back to the board from what I, I saw, note from the township manager, went to the board of directors, asking them, should we hire a facilitator, or should we do it in-house, but provide training for the multiple boards and commissions on Robert's Rules of Order? Because some people are watching us on TV, and they're, they're not happy that we're having open conversations and not following Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
This is, I'm not sure if it's a project update, but is the May 9 meeting scheduled to give the update out, the Village of Oakhamas still scheduled?
As far as I know, yes.
Any update on Trader Joe's?
No, not at this time.
Darn. Waiting for that one.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, not your fault. Thank you.
All right. No more project report? So, last thing is public remarks. Ms. Page is the only one here, and she's already done it, so. All right, then we are adjourned, man. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.